All right, I call the February meeting of the Board, our two school district boards of education to order. Welcome all our guests for attending today. First up, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda.
Can I get a second?
A second.
All those in favor raise your hand, opposed the same. Open forum, do we have anybody for open forum?
I do not, sir.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Any corrections to the minutes? All right, all those in favor raise your hand, opposed the same. Agenda is approved. Any discussion on transfer payment of bills?
The catapult program, it's at eighty thousand dollars.
Yep, that's our summer school curriculum.
So we pay for that?
Yep, every year.
For last year, we paid for that coming year.
Say again?
Last year, it said for last year.
Yeah, we, it said that it was from last year?
I thought it said from previous year.
We make, we don't pay for anything all at once, so you'll see that, I'm guessing here, I'd need Paula to tell me, but we get a bill for that about quarterly, so that we don't pay for it all at one time, so what you're seeing is our latest.
Okay, is there a reverse with that?
What do you mean by reverse?
We pay for the program, I guess we're getting attendance.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I see where you're going with that.
Yeah, I'm good.
Good. Can I get a motion to approve the transfer payment of bills?
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer payment of bills.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, further discussion? All right, all those in favor raise your hand, opposed the same. Reports, elementary report.
Good evening everyone, I hope everyone's staying warm and enjoying this lovely weather we have going on. I want to start out with our enrollment, so we're at two seventy-seven currently, which is about three down from November. We've had some families moving in and out, and while we've gained some families, we've lost some families that had more than one child at our school. So that's kind of why we see that three down from November, and most of those changes happened right around winter break, which is also typical time for people to move. Celebrations, our students worked really hard to meet their first attendance challenge goal, and Miss Lynn and I got hired in the base, and that was a really good time, the students were excited. And then they voted on a new goal for their next attendance challenge. The other thing that we noticed in our leadership team when we met is our behavior data was starting to go up. So when we came back from Christmas break, we set a behavior challenge goal, and so they're working on earning Wildcat bucks for positive things, and that's displayed right out here in our foyer, so they see it anytime they go to specials and when they enter and exit the building, and they're doing great with that. We set the goal for a hundred Wildcat bucks as a building, so it's a building-wide goal, and they're already at sixty-one since we returned from Christmas break, so they're doing a great job with that, and they can earn that for anything from walking down the hallways the correct way to doing a really great job for their specials teachers. So they're just doing a wonderful job of working towards those goals. We also saw a lot of students show great progress on their iReady diagnostic, which I'll talk a little bit about below here in just a minute. For culture, we're working on planning our spring title event that's coming up in March, and that will be breakfast with buddies, so we're super excited to welcome families into the building for that event. It's always a good time and getting kids pumped up about reading. So our title teachers Beth and Melanie are doing a wonderful job of planning that event. Our building sunshine committee is also continuing to work hard, excuse me, to plan some fun events for staff members for the remainder of the year, so that's a great time for us to get to know one another just a little bit better. For instruction, we have still really been focusing on cooperative learning strategies, that's a building-wide goal. It's in our building improvement plan, and Whitley Milton from M U R P B C came and visited us again, and she had an awesome presentation on our PD days. She modeled some cooperative learning strategies that our teachers could use in the classroom, and it was just a good time, really upbeat, and taught them a lot of different strategies that they could go back and try that same week in their classroom. So we are thankful for her partnership and continuing to help us learn and grow. Grade levels are also continuing to look through, the MAP item analysis, and part of that is the state just released what's called testlets for MAP, and so it's going to essentially give kids a chance to practice and teachers a chance to kind of see where their students will likely test on MAP, make adjustments as necessary, and they can take those again if they need to. Below, you will see in your board packet the classroom SMART rules for the semester, as well as their iReady data. So I've included both reading for the whole school and each individual grade level, as well as math data for the whole building overall, as well as grade level data. Now, I think there's a couple of things that you can't see in that data that I would like to just point out. We worked with Dr. Jill Brown, who's our reading consultant again, this, sorry, last month now, in January, and the really awesome thing that we noticed is we had had a huge gap in phonics over the last several years. We have almost completely closed that gap, looking at our iReady data, our DIBLs data, and then some phonics screeners. So that was a huge gap that we had, that even though our data's not quite where we wanted it, we have closed that gap. So our next really big focus area for reading is going to be focusing on the vocabulary piece, because as a building, that's kind of where we're struggling a little bit right now. But I thought that was huge, because we've really been working hard to close that phonics school, or that phonics gap, and that's been a goal over the last several years, and we finally, for the most part, done it. So I thought that was awesome to share. The other thing you'll notice, while we're not where we want to be yet, the data is moving in the right direction, so the green, kids are starting to shift from red to yellow and then yellow to green. Overall, as a school, reading is a little bit stronger, which makes a lot of sense, because we've been heavily focused on reading the last several years, but we're going to continue to look for resources for vocabulary for reading, and then potential math resources to help improve those math scores. Are there any questions?
I appreciate you approaching, playing with the goal-setting strategies and stuff like that, appreciate the information. I think we're going to realize benefits of that, it's a good job by you on that. I know you led that to a degree, I know our faculty is implementing that, but good job on that, young lady.
Thank you, and I would say I'm very proud of my teachers and students. They've been working really hard on posting their data outside classrooms. I've seen teachers taking their classrooms out and really looking at their SMART goal and their progress. Some grade levels even have goals of their own outside their classroom, and I've seen whole grade levels out there together, looking at their data, filling in the data together. So teachers and students have really done an awesome job, kind of just taking and running with that. And then also with Whitley Milton, where we saw our gaps, and also we met with iReady. When we were looking at our iReady data, they were helping us break it down further. Teachers were already right there in that meeting, making plans on how they were going to address their instructions. So I'm very proud of them and very thankful for their hard work.
No, that's cool, I think it's going to enable our case to achieve better, I believe it will.
Okay, thank you.
Superintendent report.
So, didn't get the Super Bowl result that we wanted to, which has affected our climate, but we are making progress with cultural improvements. Culture is kind of our habits and beliefs. However, it is going to impact and is continuing to impact our climate and will through the spring, especially as we go through, well typically, we don't get a break this far through January and February, but March, so we'll have some focus on improving our climate through that time. We'll be meeting as a team to discuss our plans for next year in twenty-five and twenty-six, and then be looking forward to the spring, doing an assessment push, which just essentially means doing exactly what Kami is discussing, trying to figure out where our gaps are and address that through instruction. I always called it the blitz, you know, you just kind of blitz through the spring. Personnel and staffing, we do have an E L A that will present in closed session, as well as the part-time person that'll eventually come on full-time there at the board office. We will be posting general vacancies in the spring. We have solicited staff to ask those folks that may be planning to move on to greener pastures to let us know. We think we're in pretty good shape there, don't see a lot of movement coming. From the benefits side, you know that I met with O S V A at the end of January. I anticipated an increase, I thought three, maybe five. It ended up being six percent, considering we haven't moved at all in the last two years. That's an average of two percent, we're looking great there. Of particular interest, I added this recently, but, so I'm not sure if you got the chance to review it, but they are negotiating with N U Healthcare, which came back at a thirty-nine percent increase over their costs from last year. So they're negotiating that. We'll continue with our continuous improvement efforts. The I Cs have been very busy, I've got some great feedback on them from staff and from administration and from them. They're really doing some good work. We do have exchange days coming through at the end of the March. We've got about a handful of people who didn't do their professional development at some point, so I'll be working with them at the end of March and April if they don't get that in the last minute, while everybody else enjoys the extended spring break option there around Easter. Campus looks pretty good now, we did lose another compressor in the elementary, and we're going to consider, continue to do that, I think, for a while. We'll talk about the general contractor interview that we did and the bids that came in. Spring sports just around the corner, so we're already breaking the seal on those. Mr. Minix will be having that update as winter sports ends and spring begins. We'll also have spring concerts coming, so looking forward to that. Budget and finance, I know that that doesn't necessarily cover legislation, but we do have to take a very pointed and focused look at what's coming through the legislature at this time. So we have, as I put in my notes, no less than fifty bills that are in some way either directly affecting our funding for this next year or they're going to affect the state's budget. And those impacts vary from hundreds of thousands of dollars to hundreds of millions of dollars. So we did get two hundred million dollars of our state budget approved, but the other three hundred million is a hanging chad, and that three hundred million is our state formula payment. So we're supposed to be at sixty-seven sixty right now for S A T, we're about six sixty-six hundred. Governors already said they're not going to fully fund our next year's jump to seventy-one forty-five. We won't know that for a while, so somewhere between sixty-six hundred, cross my fingers, and seventy-one forty-five is where we're going to land. Superintendents and districts across the state are having this conversation right now. You would think, having passed the omnibus bill in April, so a little less than a year ago, that our commitment to funding, that would have extended at least one year, but it hasn't. And that makes a hundreds of thousands of dollar year, a year, impact to our state revenues. Not really going to be able to put together as accurate a budget, or as an aggressive one, as I was at this time last year, because I don't know what's going to happen with our funding. It has to go through the legislature, has to go through funding committees, appropriations. That doesn't rule out line item type veto type actions, so hard telling. However, we'll do the best we can with what we get. And as I kind of dial that in and get a more focused idea of what that is, I'll be letting you know. There are a ton of other bills coming through, everything from open enrollment to charter schools, you name it, that are going to affect our ability to maintain and stabilize our instructional and student achievement efforts here, not to mention the budget impact. And at the very least, they're very distracting from what we're trying to do here every day. And so you're going to see, hopefully, if we do a great job as leaders, we'll stabilize that at the leadership level with our folks. But we're going to make every effort to continue to focus on our salaries and benefits for our teachers going into next year. I listed out some things. One thing that I did want to point out, because everybody thought sports betting was our savior. The anticipated revenue was one million eighty-four thousand for all Missouri schools. That's not Missouri public schools, that's all Missouri schools. So we don't know whether a hundred percent of that's going to go to public, some percentage is going to go to public. That means any school that's recognized in Missouri, we get to dice up a million eighty-four thousand dollars, which isn't anything, like, it's just not going to do anything for us. I wish that I could say it would. It'll take a little bit longer. I guess my message there is with all the moving parts, not just our budget numbers and our financial future, but also the state of education and how we're going to have to respond to those, it's going to keep me guessing for a little while longer, as it is across the state. As I've said on many, a snow day, my crystal ball is broken there, and I'll tell you as soon as I know.
All right, any questions? Thank you for that positive message. Moving on, discussion, summer school dates.
So we set summer school dates each, every year at this time. The most reasonable seem to be May twentieth to June twentieth. That'll give us that, until that next week to start into summer school, and it'll give us about a week after to pull together our numbers, our A D A and all of our reporting, and be pretty similar to every, every year for the last five years.
Any question?
So have we ever talked about, I do have a question. Have we ever talked about moving it back a week so that there's a week in between, or like, starting right after Memorial Day, would it push it too late, or?
Starting summer school?
Yeah.
Well, if we start after summers, or after, after the holiday, it'll push us right up to the end. It'll give us no time to kind of do our reporting and submit everything to the state, unless we're willing to go five days a week instead of four.
Okay.
It just pushes us right up on the edge where everything has to be right first time go, and you send it off. And that does have a major impact to our A D A. We currently claim between forty and forty-five student units per year in addition to our annual A D A that gives us funding at that sixty-six hundred currently.
Okay.
A few hundred thousand, so we don't want to be wrong with that.
Anything else? H V A C field deals.
So we did have our H V A C meeting, we'll be going out to bid for that. I listed a couple of the options for you guys. Probably the main point of discussion is whether you think or not that double the budget is worth being able to have, to have a perfect environment on graduation day. And here's what I mean by that. Two thirty-ton units is going to serve us three hundred and sixty-four days a year just fine. Heating and cooling, it will be more efficient than what we have now on the heating side. We can go two seventy-ton units, which is going to do a great job with twenty-five hundred people in the dome, but it is double the budget, and it is a bigger system, will quite garner us the savings that we'd have, but it will keep it a nice cool seventy, seventy-five degrees in there that one day. Having said that, the two thirty-ton units, if we, if we're efficient in our operations, keep the doors closed, precool the night before, design the air curtain in there. I think we can stay in that eighty degree, you know, seventy-five to eighty-three, somewhere in that range, just fine. Which is far cooler than what we'll have, which will be drier also, so we won't be hot and we won't be humid in there. It won't be ninety-seven and humid, it'll be eighty and dry, seventy-eight and dry, eighty-one and dry, in that area.
Thoughts?
I like the, I like the cheaper option. I think that will get, I think that will get us most of what we want.
I think so also, technically, we didn't even improve like an HVAC type unit. We set a cooling system to drop at ten or twenty degrees, and we will do that with the two thirty-ton units. So we'll garner the benefit the other three hundred and sixty-four days a year and still meet our target at about half the cost, maybe a little less than half, or a little more than half. Then we will be going out for bid here fairly soon with that, and we will be getting started very soon with that.
Sounds good. Second reading of regulation policy zero four one one.
This policy adjusts our practice for agendas to align with our current and preferred practice, which is essentially the two business days, making sure that it's digitally available, the three working days prior to the meeting date for agenda items. It's the same six-ten dot zero-two-one that we had before, or section six-ten.
Questions, discussion?
We'll read that and vote on it our next meeting.
Okay. Community, community presentations for levy increase?
Yes, sir, so just want to at least put out a couple of dates so that I can send those dates out with a community invitation to speak with civic groups if they're interested, where I'll just lay out kind of how our operating levy works, our debt service levy works, and why exactly we're asking for the increase on the operating side. Just need to know a couple of dates that you guys think are best for the community and to get the message out, and whatever they are, I'll make them work.
Would a, say a Wednesday be best, just because it would conflict with, maybe that isn't the case anymore, but would it conflict with less other sporting events and activities?
Church is the favorite.
We, we have the odd Wednesday events when we just can't. For the most part, these are ones that we try to avoid.
You don't go to church on Wednesday?
I think the only thing I was going to say.
No, ours, ours has a church service on Tuesday, so if, I mean, if.
We could offer one Wednesday and then one on a different night. So I think Friday through Sunday, people aren't going to be interested in. So it's really a Monday through Thursday question. If we have one on Wednesday, that leaves Monday, Tuesday, Thursday of some week to.
If anybody care, that's a big two.
Okay. Do you prefer to have them, April eighth is voting day? I kind of think somewhere around mid-March, have two or three right in a row. We're separated by, you know, three to five days to give people some scheduling options.
Yeah. Maybe like that, March seventeenth week, do one, and do one the following week. I'd say Tuesday or Wednesday would probably be the best options. If you do it Monday, I think people are getting started with their weekend, they forget. Like you said, if you do it on the weekend, I don't think you're going to get turned up then either.
And my plan, too, is to show, you know, everything we do from a budget perspective is, is available to the public, so I intend to have everything but personally identifiable staff information and student information up there, the same workbook that you guys see when I present budget. So anybody can ask, and I'll be able to show them exactly where our money comes from and where it goes.
All right. Calendar for twenty-five, twenty-six.
So I gave you a calendar option there, the only part of it that I'm not happy with is, and it's something that I actually got help to figure it out from being real honest, Aaron pointed this out. Our staff, probably not the best day to have one of our PD days, the day after the Super Bowl, and that's, I know now, that's February eighth next year. And so February ninth will, is currently one of our PD days, but I was going to make that an exchange day, meaning the PD that they go to this summer would be an exchange for that Monday. Most people participate in that, and therefore, most people would be off the Super Bowl, or the day after the Super Bowl. I did offer as an alternative that February second date as well. I think our only real movable thing that's subjective is that February second and ninth date. Thought about putting one in December, so we could also combine that with our staff holiday and celebration, or maybe put another one just a different weekend in February.
Discussion, questions?
I have a question. So what is the, what is the current, and I know that when the legislature gets done in May, it may be completely different next time, but what is the, currently, there's a requirement for hours, but then there's also a strongly worded suggestion for days, right?
Yeah, the state bonuses us one percent of our state payment, and then two percent years after that, if we have a hundred and sixty-nine days or more. So our minimum requirement by law is one thousand and forty-four hours. And that really comes from how we determine what a school year is at the high school level to constitute a full year of instruction to meet Missouri graduation requirements. However, there are two options above that, so a thousand forty-four is the minimum. If we include a thousand forty-four, but include an additional thirty hours, then we have to make up half of our inclement weather days. If we include an additional sixty hours, we don't have to make up any of our inclement weather days. So for, in recent history, we've always created calendars that were one thousand one hundred and four hours long, which is the one thousand forty-four hour minimum, plus sixty hours for inclement weather, and that's where we come up with our typical eleven hundred and four to eleven hundred and seven hour calendar, which is still only about a hundred and forty-seven days, depending on how you apportion your halftime. So we would still be twenty-two days short of getting into that bonus funding. But most, most would agree that the one hundred and sixty-day rule is to encourage five-day school weeks.
Okay, and that would get you two percent?
Well, our second year would get us two percent.
And what does that come to a year?
Uh, it's be about forty thousand, forty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And that wasn't in place when we went to four day?
It was not.
That's just something they passed last year?
Last year.
Okay.
I really think if, if we're doing what we can to improve teacher salary, I really think that the next, the next thing that we need to focus and improve on, and I think that we are doing what we can, no doubt, is our student success rate and student achievement scores, and, I mean, I know that we're tackling that, and I appreciate all the data that is shown to us, but I don't know, is there any way that you could, for discussion's sake, because I want to try to get as much money as possible to our district, is there any way, like, maybe next month, if we could get an example calendar of what a calendar would look like if we had a hundred and sixty-nine days?
Absolutely.
Okay. I just think that we need to explore all options to do the best that we can for our students.
My first thoughts there, so I'm always thinking about, okay, what's big on my plate with that? That, that will have budget impacts beyond what our contracted salary is, just keep on that mind. So I'll likely bring with that an estimate impact on hourly. For instance, I think full-time position now is one thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight hours. If we move to a hundred and sixty-nine, that hourly schedule will change and will impact an annual salary, which will be a good thing, but it is, it is longer days, so I just don't, I, if we're moving that way for our contracted folks, we can't. for our contracted folks, we can't forget that it'll drag our hourly folks along with it, which I don't think they're gonna be upset about earning more money annually, but it is still.
No, I think more information is better, so that'd be good.
Could I ask a question? When did it switch from a hundred and seventy-four days we had to go to the, the hours?
I don't remember how many years ago, but I'm gonna guess, and this is absolutely a guess, that they went from out, days to hours. Man, oh man, probably eight to ten years ago, that they moved from days to hours.
But a hundred and seventy-four used to be the minimum days that we had.
I think there was some discussion about, is a day a day? If you go to, you go to school for seven hours, that constitutes a day, but another school this week is to school for nine hours a day. And so is it really, uh, an equivalent comparison to, to compare days? So they moved to hours. What they didn't anticipate in doing that is the slide to a lot of schools, I think somewhere between a hundred and thirty and a hundred and fifty schools in Missouri, using that, the, to in turn move to the four-day school week as a, and a retention and attraction for personnel and staffing.
Unintended consequences.
Two thousand eleven and twelve, so twelve years.
They're always out there.
So, and I just will make it clear that this is just, we're just looking at it from a calendar standpoint, what it would look like. And I think we'll have further discussions. I mean, this will at least, the community will hear about it and will start to tell us what they think of it. Because I, I suspect eventually we'll get to a discussion about, uh, the increased costs and could we do it without a levy increase, or would we have to have a levy increase to, to go to a five-day week?
From a, a climate standpoint, I wouldn't, I don't know that we're in a position to entertain it without a levy increase. If I'm just being real honest, what my gut tells me, will I make it to my truck? Maybe if a couple would be helping.
Okay, get Mark in for him.
If you just let Mark run.
All right. Very good. Any other discussions on the calendar? That, that will surely prompt some interesting discussions. All right, let's move to action items. Health insurance rates, we already talked about that, two percent?
Yep, uh, we have a few options here. We can either pass it on to our staff. We can pay for it, uh, completely, or we can pay for it in part. Considering our other discussions, I think it's wise that we pay for it completely as a part of our effort to, uh, to attract, retain, and hire great staff. And so that'll cost us, the real number was about twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. Your, your staff changes every year. A little bit, right around the thirty thousand dollar mark is what it will cost us, and I would recommend that we approve the rates, but we approve so, we approve it knowing that in our budget that you're gonna see here in a couple months, you're gonna see us paying for that as a district.
Discussion? If not, can I get a motion to approve the increase to health insurance rates as presented?
I move to approve the increase to health insurance rates as presented.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Further discussion? During the unopened favor, raise your right hand. Oppose the same. HBAC service warranty, we talked about this quite a bit at the last meeting.
Requires a bid, it's over fifty thousand dollars, at fifty-eight thousand?
Discussion?
Kinda have to have it, yeah.
Yeah, I do not like paying that number at all, but.
A warranties. But, that's it? Can I get a motion to approve the service warranty as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the service warranty as presented.
Second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose the same. Motion carries. Ah, exciting one. Approve the general contractor bid.
It is very exciting. I've added two addendums and hard copy to each of your places there. One of them is labeled plain black and white sheet, says alternates. The other has an Excel document, it's very, very small, but you'll see our logo there in the upper left-hand corner. Uh, this is required by law, and I'm very happy to say that we had a robust offering, uh, for bids, anticipating, you know, if it was grade three or four, and having eight. You can talk a little bit.
Yeah, uh, just to, just to touch on that, uh, I believe everyone has a copy of the, the bid breakdown of the bid tab. Uh, so it shows you, yeah, we had a very healthy turnout of eight, uh, interested bidders on bid day. Most, like, I'd say half of those or more were under our, uh, budget. Uh, we had, uh, nine, nine or ten total alternates, nine alternates. Um, that they all put a number two, mostly a number two, some of the bidders left out the first one. But, yeah, at the end of the day, uh, very happy with the turnout, uh, happy with our low bed. We, we ended up interviewing, uh, Beck's Construction Services, uh, out of Maryland Heights, uh, just this afternoon. Uh, we got, got pushed back because of the snow. We were planning to interview them the other day, but the snow impacted that, so we got them in here just in time to be able to present, uh, recommendation for a work to them. Uh, we feel very confident that they can get the job done. They had their project team, um, come to the interview today along with one of their vice presidents and the operations director. Uh, so they're, they're very hungry and willing to get started right away. It sounds like they're gonna be pushing us to get mobilized soon, so we gotta try to, uh, figure that out here quickly. But I think they're, they're just ready to get after it as soon as the weather cooperates for them. Couldn't say, uh, we personally have, navigate, have worked with them, uh, in the past. Just, I think, a year ago on some renovation work at St. Louis Public Schools. And they did a bang-up job there. But they, they have a healthy backlog that's ready to, uh, take, take on a, you know, this project.
When were they gonna mobilize?
They're, well, they brought a schedule which I, I would say not, uh, most, most contractors don't bring a schedule to the interview, uh, but they did bring a preliminary schedule that showed first or second week of March, as early as that, so.
Good.
Within the next three weeks.
One-year construction or more than that?
Uh, they projected to be done by May, so they're actually projecting to be done earlier than what our anticipated substantial completion, so gives them a little bit of room, um, in there contractually, but, um, yeah, if they, they, with their schedule, I think their biggest thing was trying to get dried in by next winter, so they had projected to be dried in.
Shouldn't have a problem with that.
By September, October.
They'll be waiting longer for the steel package than anything, I suppose.
Yeah, so, yeah, they're, they're ready to hit the ground running and get after it, so.
So as a general, that puts us about one point one, one point two million under what our estimated construction costs were for this bulk of the project. A few, uh, you know, we had quite a few. We had nine bid day alternatives in there. You know, uh, for instance, you're gonna hear about the Northwest parking lot. That's right outside the pre-k, between the baseball field and the track. Uh, the base bid was for that to be gravel. But you'll see the first three alternates are to do that chip and seal, which contractors apparently hate. That was, we got, all of our no bids were in that area. Uh, but we also have some money there to do asphalt and, you know, pretty substantial amount to do concrete. Uh, but we also have a couple of bid day alternatives for our main parking lot, which is in, uh, need of repair a great deal. We both have that bid out as asphalt, but my number one is that number five, which would be to make that main parking lot concrete. We'll have new lighting, we'll have, uh, new cameras as a part of that, new concrete, new striping, and a very beautiful, uh, aesthetic, uh, on all of our buildings. But we have about one point one million dollars to spend to over-deliver to our public, uh, based on what we presented, uh, and just doing a good job with managing. Uh, we need to decide what we would like to do with that eventually. For tonight, we'll need, uh, to approve our general contractor, knowing that we really need to prioritize as a board what our bid day alternatives, what we'd like to, to do with that money, so to speak.
All right, questions?
What was the, the number eight fire alarm voice deduct?
So that one, uh, per the current, they had to go with a horn, strobe, and voice, uh, voice activated alarm, um, but I think in discussions we talked about since the existing buildings have a horn and strobe, so it's just a sound and a light. Could we just match that same effect for the addition? Uh, to do that, uh, we have, we had to get a variance from the, the county. Um, and so the base bid was to have a full voice activated thing, that, so the alternate was to kind of bring that back to just a horn and strobe approach, and so there's a credit for that.
Okay. There's probably not enough money to hassle with, so five thousand.
It's not a lot. That was, in our original bid process, that was made out to seem like it would be tens of thousands of dollars, or five thousand dollars.
But I'll say that was my pushback. I mean, I said this is stupid, but if it's only five grand, then who cares? I mean, still five grand, don't get me wrong, but it's not enough to...
Hmm, that's interesting.
No, the parking lot was definitely the, probably the most exciting thing on there in my mind. The, the bids came in low enough that we could consider that. We never dreamt that'd be the case.
Also, not in there are a couple things that we could work to improve, uh, with that money as well. The, the, uh, the drive that goes around the backside of our current, uh, CTE building and our maintenance shop, we could upgrade that and, you know, maybe make that a little bit wider and a little bit better. I think of all that great, uh, the facade that we're gonna have aesthetically coming in, the, the concession stand and restrooms for the field, maybe we could paint that or re-skin it or something. We have a lot of options and a lot to discuss.
We have need.
Yes.
No doubt about that. All right, so the only other thing I'd like to say is just point out that, uh, it is a out-of-town construction manager, but there's four hundred thousand dollars difference between them and the, the next bid. I mean, four hundred thousand, that is a lot of money, so. I'd like to use local, but four hundred thousand.
I know we had a conversation, we actually brought that up and we received their list of, uh, subcontractors, because they're, they're the general contractor, they're not gonna self-proclaim their work, they're gonna come out and manage it. I think we had a list from them. They had five or six, uh, contractors that are coming out of St. Louis that they've worked with before. The rest of the contractors are all locally, they're Jeff City in this area. So I'd say that's a majority of the contractors that'd be on site are, are more local to the Jeff City surrounding area here.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve general contractor bid, but the low bid, Beck's?
I move to approve, um, our general contractor bid with Beck's Construction.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Are we gonna determine the alternates now, or is that down the road?
I think next month.
Yeah, we'll, we'll determine them next month. What I'll do is put together a, a comprehensive list that includes all the bid, bid day alternatives, things that you guys have told me that you would like to work on, and then let you guys present some prioritized, or I'll send something out that allows us to narrow that list down so that we're not choosing from an arm-length list in March, if that's acceptable.
Because the only thing on there, that an alternate which had, would have a long lead time would be the HBAC units, and those weren't, those aren't big units, so I don't even think they'll have that long of a lead time.
Yeah, we'd probably have some time, because they have to buy their contractor out, and once they get some metals in, so it's probably at least a couple months.
Same anyway, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
All right. Further discussion?
I was just gonna say, I came to the bid opening just to watch, and it, it was pretty exciting that we had that many bids to open and, I mean...
Wouldn't we have eight contractors?
Eight, yeah.
That's, that's a good bid date.
Yeah, that's really good.
Um, I was really excited about that, and if, if they're willing to use local, um, local crews and local businesses, I, I, I think that's.
They'll run a similar process to us. I'm speaking very much from a layman's standpoint here, in that they put it out to bid and a bunch of subcontractors here give them bids and tell them what they'll do it for, and based on certain specifications, and so they'll do something, something similar to us.
Well, and they already did that. I mean, they do it at the last minute before the bid opening. Everybody submits their sublists. They write it all down, and then that's what we got on Monday.
Yeah, they've already, they already have bids.
Yep.
They already showed up.
Yep. Now they sent us a, a sublist.
Yeah, yeah, we have, yeah, we have a sublist.
Yeah. All right. Further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand? All right, those opposed, same. All right, that's a big deal. Very good. Playground bid.
Shout out to, uh, our elementary school PTO and Matt McCoy, he's here too, he's been working on this playground project, or projects for quite a while, multiple years, a new playground, uh, below that. So we decided to move this project into the scope of our bond, and that passed, uh, that passed along with everything else. So we did get a bid on those at three price points, a hundred thousand, it was about one oh one, a hundred and sixty-two and two hundred and seventy-three, with the main differences, uh, being some of the, uh, installation options, but also completely changing out our aggregate, those little smooth pebbles that are at the bottom. Enormously expensive to change those out to rubber balls or a rubber mat. That's where the six hundred and sixty-two and two hundred and seventy-three thousand came from. But keeping in line with what the PTO presented is that hundred and one thousand dollar mark, uh, with about seventeen thousand of those dollars being removal of the aggregate and removal of the old. We believe that we can do both of those in-house, uh, and so we'll have about an eighty-four thousand dollar cost to replacing the upper playground. Of particular importance, uh, kind of a, a reoccurring theme or point of discussion has been improving our playground itself, meaning the dirt, the grass. We got a lot of potholes out there, it's not very level. Our kids like to play kickball and tag. Probably use some of that seventeen thousand to go ahead and flatten those areas, maybe install some maces over there, but generally improve the, the surrounding area. But tonight, we would, uh, need to approve moving forward with that, uh, that lowest bid to install a new playground.
Questions? My other question was, we only have one bid, so how are we getting around that from a purchasing standpoint?
They're gonna use, uh, source wall.
Okay, perfect, correct.
Is the, the old playground, is, is someone specifically taking that, or is it? Is the church, is Community Christian Church taking it?
Well, they, they were, they, I found out just a couple hours ago that they were not gonna be able to take it, so we'll have to find another route. I did have another superintendent reach out, uh, from Tuscumbia, so I'm gonna reach back out to her. I already let her know that Community Christian was taking a look at it, so I'm gonna reach back out to Tina and say, hey, come look at it if you're interested and, uh, see if they, they would like to take it off.
There's gotta be some community organization that would.
I would think so.
Like, like it, yeah. All right. Can I get a motion to approve the playground bid?
I move to approve the, uh, playground improvement bid.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any other further discussion or questions? Hearing none. Those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose the same. Very good. When will that project be done?
Summer, break, since summer.
The summer? That's very good. Appreciate, I know this is a long time coming, so we do appreciate your, your work to get us this far. I'm glad the school district can help.
Yeah, we appreciate you.
Thanks, Matt.
All right. Thank you.
Groundbreaking? Uh, maybe I can touch base with, uh, you about maybe orchestrating a groundbreaking for the high school, the new high school pad.
And that can happen anytime after they mobilize, you know, it's not a, they can keep it, whatever, that schedule, however real, however real it was.
Thank you. Thanks, Matt.
All right. Thank you. All right. Anything else? All right, uh, the next regular meeting will be March twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Can I get a motion to adjourn to close session?
I move to adjourn to close session pursuant of RSMO six one zero point.
I move to adjourn to closed session pursuant of RSMO six one zero point zero two one, ASD subsections thirteen, all just personally identifiable, employment information, three personal act, personnel actions. One, kinda, I think one's erased, I think that's it.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Brad?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Naomi?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And I am, yes, we're going.